Good evening, everybody. City, Corlin County Council Meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, Department of Public Hearing. Public hearing proposed local law amending the zoning map to designate property located at seventy nine Palmer Street as a GB two. Public hearing this time. Moving down the sheet. Second time, does anybody wish to speak on a proposed local law? Third and final time, does anybody wish to speak on proposed local law? The seventy nine Palmer Street GB two. Local public hearing at this time. Will call me.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Siliman.
Here.
Councilmember Pnello.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Here.
I'm gonna ask everybody to stand to the flag, and when we're done with that, please stand for a minute before we come to the other.
While everybody is in the seat of the Senate, the United States of America, the Republic of America, the nation under God, in this world, we are the best.
So the moment of reflection that we normally do, I'd like to change it up a little bit tonight. I think it's, we need to liven up a little bit and not be so down. So I just say, reach around, everybody, shake hands, say hello and.
Nice.
How do you change for your?
Presentations. Proclamation, designation April is a fair housing month in the city of Corlin.
It's all honor.
It's all that the city of Corlin County Council hereby declares and proclaims April is fair housing month in the city of Corlin, New York.
Uh, rewards, please pardon that. And additional Chief DeRere and Deputy Chief Q would like to come up here. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call Sergeant Patrick O'Donnell. Not often that the department gets to recognize those that are out of uniform. Our detectives are kind of the, uh, the guys that work in the background. Sergeant O'Donnell is seventeen years, seventeen years on and was fortunate to be one of his FTOs. Back in December, actually, a situation that we're in right now, we have, uh, SUNY Portland on break. And on break, the road patrol officers are checking student housing, checking businesses regularly, but over Christmas break when they're gone for an extended period, we always have a rash of burglaries. This past year was no different. December, the night of December twenty second into the December twenty third, road patrol officers had been sent out a few burglaries in the student housing areas. Had found some footprints in the snow and unfortunately weren't able to come up with any suspects. Uh, following day, if everyone remembers, December twenty third, it was four degrees outside. Sergeant O'Donnell went back up to the scene, went from house to house, and one of the items stolen in a burglary was a suitcase. And Sergeant O'Donnell found some drag marks on sidewalks and roadways and for about an hour, tracked these tracks throughout the city, ended up at the county lodge, watched the video, uh, and through the video found, hey, this suitcase ended up in a vacant room that was supposed to be red. Made, made appearance there and surprised a couple of people. And, uh, hey, at that point, at four degrees out, the last thing you want to do is go for a run. But this individual, Sergeant, quite, quite a lengthy run through the downtown area. They ended up in the ground head lot, subject custody, thousands of dollars worth of property recovered and I believe he's still in jail and we counted for ten residential burglaries. Congratulations, Sergeant. Certificate comes with a, an award, even though Sergeant O'Donnell is not in uniform, this is a department award. It's, it's, it's a high prestigious award, you know, for the department. You just wear that on your uniform just to signify.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Yeah.
Next, I'd like to call up Tyler Zasek. So I, I feel a little bit like a broken record, but Officer Zasek, he's got a past EMT experience and, you know, a lot of officers, you get that call, you know, someone in a medical emergency. A lot of times we let the fire department get there first. Officer Zasek, with his experience, um, somehow he has that thought over his head, he's always the first on scene. And this award is, is a compilation of three separate life-saving awards. On three occasions last year, he responded to a call where his subject was in cardiac arrest. He assisted at times with the fire department, with some citizens and, um, in all three instances, a life of saving. Again, this is an award that doesn't happen often, it's not given out often. But Officer Jason, we're fortunate to have him with his training knowledge and experience and congratulations. Yes, you're either six or you're nine. I'm not sure when. Thanks, congratulations. Uh, last but not least, Alice Perkins. So Officer Perkins, a section more recent incident and to keep, uh, in the interest of anonymity. There was an incident, uh, January thirty first of this year, subject was in crisis. And through that situation, the subject, um, presented themselves on the edge of the river, Riverside Plaza. Actually, Officer Perkins and Officer Hardin, who's not here tonight, uh, responded to the scene, accounted the subject. And, you know, did, did their best to be escalate, get the subject to, you know, respond to them, talk with them, and, uh, subject made a decision to enter the river. Again, as I say, oh, no, this winter was not a wonderful winter, it was cold, it was raining. Water temperature was pretty rigid, I would imagine, especially was above your waist, ripen up to my chest. Officer Perkins and Officer Hardin entered the river. They were able to get the individual out of the river, get her to safety, and get her to, um, you know, the care that she needed. This, again, is an award, an award that's not given out very often. This is a department award of valor. Yes, sir. It's a pin, wear it in your uniform to signify your accomplishment and your dedication and the courage and support that. Police, city, the police force will be recognized. City project, uh, project update, comprehensive plan, project update. City was awarded a ninety thousand state grant to hire a consultant to help develop a new comprehensive plan. City selected, so their chief base firm and line of design and research, EDR. Sam and Brianna, project leaders are here to talk about the project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sam Gordon and this is Brianna Isa. And as was just said, we are with EDR based in Syracuse. We're just gonna spend a couple of minutes kind of giving an update on where we are with the comprehensive planning process. So you have a sense of, of what, where we're at and where we're intending to go with the process. We do have some materials that we will pass out as well. And of those, we have a, a project schedule and also we have developed kind of a postcard with a link to the project website, which we've been working on. And will be associated with the Corlin City Rising, uh, site that was used for the DRI. So just, just a quick, uh, kind of overview on our team. So I'm the technical lead. I actually run our planning practice out of Syracuse. Brianna is our day-to-day project manager and is really responsible for keeping this project on time and on budget. And then we're working under Joan Agriano, who is the president of EDR, and she was also based in Syracuse. And we have a team of planners that are supporting us. And those, some of, most of them are based in Syracuse, we have ones based in the Albany region that is helping us. And then we're also working with a firm of, of the old called Prospect Hill, who we work with quite often. They're going to be doing a lot of the mapping, the GIS mapping to support the project. We have formed, uh, working with, uh, with the mayor, we have formed a steering committee that has now met a couple of times. Uh, and that steering committee will meet up to six times throughout the process. And really their job is to help us to see from various perspectives in the community, from a business perspective, from people, someone representing the college, we have people representing the business community, people representing different housing interests in the city, uh, just to make sure that we have a broad representation of different perspectives and that can help us, uh, to make sure that we're, you know, reaching the right audiences as we're working on this process. It's, Brianna and I have worked with a lot of different communities. And this steering committee's been wonderful so far, bright people who ask really good questions and are helping us to move the process forward. We are, uh, working with them. The, the immediate next step in our process is going to be a series of stakeholder focus group meetings that are kind of focused on different thematic concerns within the city. So housing, social services, open space, public health, economic development, transportation, those, those kinds of things. So we, those stakeholder meetings is typically in our process, that's one of the first things that we do. It helps us to start to get an understanding of what some of the issues are that are facing the community that we're working with, issues and opportunities to, you know, understanding basically what's happening on the ground. And then we will take that information and use that to help to inform, uh, what will be kind of the first public facing component of the project, which were beginning to happen somewhere in June. There'll be a, call it an open house kind of meeting. At that open house, we'll be asking some broader questions about, you know, where, where do people want to see the city go? What are, what are people's general concerns about what's happening in the city? We're also going to be launching a community survey as part of that. And that survey will be informed by some of this initial stakeholder outreach that we're doing right. You can see, you have the schedule up here, and I think you have it in front of you, there's really three phases to this process. The first phase is really inventory and engagement. So we're doing a lot of, starting to do a lot of data analysis to understand, you know, from, from the US Census, for example, this stakeholder outreach that we're doing, you know, what are, what are the trends in Corlin? What are the things that, you know, maybe are affecting the city that we should be paying attention to in this process? And some of those things that we hear at that first public meeting in June, we'll be testing some of that to confirm with constituents in the city, you know, does this, does this make sense based on your experience? The next phase in the process is really developing a draft plan. And that draft plan will cover a variety of different topics. This project was funded through the Smart Growth Program through New York State. So the state has some particular objectives that they want to make sure that we touch upon. I don't think, you know, based on the, the state's framework, almost everything that's in that are just kind of good planning. And focusing on a city like Corlin that's at the center of mostly Emerald County, you are a smart growth place and a place that the state should be investing in. So the one thing that you don't have is agriculture, so we're not gonna be talking about agriculture within this plan. Although there may be, maybe small scale, you know, like community gardens or something like that, it would make sense. But obviously, there's no, you don't have agricultural fields within the city. So that's the second phase, and then the last phase is the adoption phase. And, you know, typically, that's where the, where the city council will be most involved. I would encourage you to, as you are able to participate through the process and you're from your constituents and what their concerns are, but ultimately, we will be presenting. As we work through our process, we will be sharing drafts with the city administration, with different boards and commissions of the city, with the state, because they're a partner in this process. And then there'll be a draft document that gets presented to the council. And at that point, typically, you know, there's, there will be a public hearing. But leading up to that, we'll have had, uh, two, two public meetings. That first meeting in June, a second meeting that we're targeting for October of this year. And at that second meeting in October, we'll be presenting some draft recommendations for what we, what we think the city should be doing based on all the work that we've done up until that point. So that's generally the schedule. And so a big component of this, uh, comprehensive planning is engaging with the community. So we talked about the steering committee, I mentioned, uh, stakeholder focus group meetings that we're going to be holding. We're also going to be doing what we call pop-up meetings. So we're looking for places where the community might be gathering, where we can set up a table and have the survey area hold on the thing so that we can help spread the word about what's happening. So if you have ideas of, of, um, what those places might be, you know, I can leave a card and hope we can, and you guys can reach out and, and let us know what, what your thoughts are on that. As I said, there will be a community survey, and we have been, uh, working on the Corlin City Rising page.
Man, I'd reach out to Bob Hade at the Chamber and see if maybe you could do something at the business showcase, we get a lot of people through there from the city. Great. One, one thing that just came to my mind.
Yeah. I'd also reach out to the mayor's secretary for an event schedule.
Yep. And, and the mayor's been very involved, so we'll, we'll definitely, we'll, we'll, yeah. And I know, I understand that there's, there may be some sort of outreach that's done in the wards. And that'll be a good opportunity to help spread, spread the word about, about this. So, um, so, uh, this is the, the website. If you have been here before, this was previously just focused on the DRI. We've now added a tab that's about the comprehensive plan. And this is live, so, uh, and we have links to it in the postcard that we've developed. It explains what we're doing, um, what smart growth is, because that's the framework we're working with under the state. What kind of community engagement we'll be doing. You know, and it says where there will be a, um, community survey, there's going to be events. And when, when those things happen, it will be here on the website, but we'll also make sure that there are press releases out and that we really work hard to get, get the word out. And we can also let, you know, the, the council know when things are coming up so that, you know, you can also spread the word to your constituents. So, uh, also draft, once there, people can make comments through the comment forum, if they have any thoughts or ideas they want to share. And once we have a draft document, that will be posted on the website that looks to.
How much lead time will you give council when you want us to reach out to constituents?
So when there's public meeting scheduled, as soon as we have it scheduled, we can circulate, you know, correspondence with the council. So you know when, when and where that's going to be. Um, and that will be, and, um, I would say at least a month in advance. Yeah, so it should be plenty of lead time for you. Because we, I mean, we want people to come, right? And, and so if the more advanced notice people have, and the more people are helping to spread the word about. I think I touched on all that stuff. Just quickly, what's in the comprehensive plan? You know, we're going to be covering demographics for the city, looking at your parks and natural resources and cultural resources. The, the economy of the city, thinking about development patterns, land use patterns, housing issues, transportation, community resources. We'll be developing an overall vision based on what we hear from the public. Specific goals and strategies about things that we want to address. And I think from our experience, as we work on this, um, it's better to have a shorter document. That's really targeted and focused on the things that we want, that we care about, we want to address versus a luminous document that no one will ever read. So that, that's our goal, is to get you with something that's user-friendly, that you can use and becomes a valuable decision-making tool for the city. One of the critical components of that, um, we will be developing what we call a future land use plan. So, uh, I have an example up on the screen, which is at the scale in Portland County. Because we were working with the, with Portland County on the strategic development plan that they, that county legislature just adopted. And this gives you at a, at a much larger scale, a sense of what we're going to be doing, which is mapping out where, where we want to see particular land use occur. Um, and thinking about, for example, it could be density, type of use. But also in our future land use planning, we're also thinking about public investment. So it's why I wanted to show this. So one of the things that we baked into the county plan is thinking about the important transportation linkages that you have in Portland County. So think, for example, Homer Downtown Portland, Portlandville, right? These, those are some of the biggest kind of destinations that you have in the center of the county. And what we were recommending is thinking about transportation strategies that could create stronger linkages between those three communities. So that's something that we'll be thinking about in this plan, is indicating where there should be infrastructure investments like could be bike infrastructure, could be trails, could be investments in, um, in the waterfront that you have or other things like that. Or if there's a place that we think or hear that the city's interested in making a, um, facility investment. I'm just tucking up the cuff, but those things we'll try and capture in the future land use strategy. And then the next step, that strategy is intended to inform a future zoning update for the city. So that's, um, what the comprehensive plan will have to do is make, set the foundation for an update to the city. So that's not, uh, it's not part of the scope right now, but that's what we're going to be setting the stage. I think that's everything. Yes.
What's the current determination of, of the plan? I understand it's not luminous, but is it like a five-year plan, ten-year plan, fifteen-year plan?
Yeah, so, so typically, when we're developing a comp plan, we're, we're usually looking at a longer time horizon. So let's say twenty to twenty-five years. But, but the reality is, none of us know, um, even five years out, it's hard to predict, right? So we have to think long-term, but we will be identifying short-term, you know, shorter, shorter, medium-term, and some, maybe some long-term strategies that the city could be using. So short-term is, you know, one to two years. Medium-term, maybe two to seven years, and then seven years beyond this.
When I hear smart growth, I'm, I'm hoping that, I was hoping that there were strategies that were staggered in increments that would be followed up.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since, uh, since I didn't have a proper financial report at the first meeting, I just wanted to let everybody know that we did get the draft financials from twenty twenty-three, um, on Friday, from our audit team. We are working with them to finalize everything. Once we have twenty-three finalized, uh, I'll be sharing that obviously with the council, but that will allow us to finally, um, settle twenty-three, then close twenty-four, so that the goal is that we can actually start getting proper reporting going.
Nobody has signed up. Yes. Is anybody want to speak that hasn't signed up? Okay. Mayor's report, obviously, you got right here tonight. They want me to pass on, the mayor's office got word this week that the, uh, funding went through to the senior building on River Street down by the Hampton Inn, the construction will start on it this fall, so it's good news for senior housing, which we definitely want to do. Hello. Start to suck. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Bring Wyatt and Fitz Ward.
Wyatt and the fourth, still getting calls about power.
It's up for that.
Yeah.
Like it being an online meeting, we started editing.
Um, so in Ward one, uh, we had some crews out cleaning up a lot of trees, uh, which is great, and doing a lot of preventative stuff, getting away from the lines, which I think is awesome. DPW's been over there to clean up, and we've had some problems with some streets that were damaged by some snow plows. With a lot of heavy complaints, as soon as I called DPW, they gave me the order they would be done. And they were all done ahead of time, and we got calls back, uh, congratulating DPW. So Mike's not here, but thank you DPW for getting out and making everybody happy in the ward. There's still potholes and stuff to work on, and I know we gotta wait on the asphalt plant. But I think overall, uh, what we're doing to clean things up and make it functional, uh, considering the weather we had, is, is going really well, at least in Ward one.
So third ward, um, again, it's the pothole situation, specifically Townley Ave. And just everybody be careful driving on Townley, DPW is on top of it.
And just everybody be careful driving on Townley. DPW is on top of it. It's a situation that's going to be remedied as soon as the asphalt plant and it warmer weather come. But right now, they're just doing their best. They're grading it down when it gets really bad. And then they, it's fine, and then it gets the potholes again. So just DPW is on it, they know, and they're addressing it as best they can right now. Otherwise, third ward is fine.
Ward eight, just just a few things. Fox Hollow, this this concern has come up before and I'm not quite sure where we left it. But some of the residents expressed a concern regarding parking on both sides of that that street up there. There's only enough room for one lane of traffic to pass through. Fire trucks would have a very hard time trying to pass through that area. They were parking on both sides of that street. So I want to propose that we look in the signage again. And and see where we're at with that. Another another concern that just popped up and I hadn't even had a chance to get over a coat off if yet is that the cat house identified on East Ave is, it looks like it's overpopulated again. I think we all know which one that is. And also there's a track national grid pole on the corner of Port Watson and East Ave. Looks like there may be a replacement pole next to it, but they haven't transferred power over to it yet. Another windstorm like like we had the past few days. Might not have to worry about getting that back. No, that's all I have for the eighth ward. Thank you.
Well, real quick, Billy, Tom, you want, I think a word or a recommendation I'd make as far as the parking on Fox Hollow is good to be of the DPW committee.
It will be out.
Yep. Refer back to us and we'll do so.
Yes, now that now we have a committee, we gotta take a second, I'll get that.
One side or the other.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you.
All quiet, a sixth ward.
Very quiet in the second ward. And it's a lot of our neighbors are on spring break. There's a lot of trash on Clayton and Hill Street, so I'm hoping that when they get back, they can pick up their street and their yards. We're also having issues with parking on Pleasant and on Clayton. There are people parking on sidewalks, parking on both sides occasionally. Parking where they're not supposed to park, so I'm hoping that the police can get around there more often and and check that. It's particularly a problem at the bottom of Clayton Ave. And I think that people see the short term parking in front of the Y W and it just starts to kind of bleed up the hill. And we think that they are also allowed to park on that side of the street. Other than that, the snow is gone, so there's no more snowy sidewalks to to worry about. For now, but I have a feeling we won't get a big one this March. We'll see. It's the weather seesaw back and forth. That's what March is in upstate New York. You gotta enjoy the beautiful days when you get them and when it's cold, just hunker down again. Don't put your, don't put your coat away. And we all made it through the big blackout last Sunday. Three quarters of the city was some lost their power, but miraculously several restaurants downtown were doing fine and had a booming business because of it. So yeah, that's it for the second ward.
All quiet, the seventh. Provenance. Go move first, fourth. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
General member, you want to adopt local law authorizing the zoning map change to designate a parcel located seventy-nine Palmer Street is G B two.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council hereby adopt to local law authorizing the zoning of tax map parcel eight seven eight seven five three oh one one nine one hundred. Subject to all regulations created and established relative to said district.
I'll move it.
Questions? Move it.
Well, just for the public, we want to say that this is a property that's straddling two different districts. And so we're just gonna make sure that the whole property is contained in G B two.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number two, designate official newspaper of the City of Portland.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council does hereby repeal resolution number four of two thousand twenty-four, which designated the Portland Standard as the city's official newspaper. And be it further resolved that the county council does hereby designate the Syracuse Post Standard as the official newspaper of the City of Portland for a period ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty-seven, or as otherwise determined by resolution of the county council.
Questions?
This sad day, but what are you going to do?
I should have mentioned earlier, I did have a chance to go to slater breakfast last Friday at the Portland House. Chamber and one of the things that somebody had mentioned to a couple senators and that were there and the fact that the state has not kept up to the times as far as publications. I'm looking around to see whether, maybe illegally, you know, whether they're being used to or newspapers or radio, stuff like that. Obviously, the newspapers are getting far in view, so they're aware that they gotta catch up to the times.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number three, approve special vet permit for sound device permit for the Corn Ducky Derby on May third, twenty twenty-five, in Suggit Park.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council does hereby approve a special event permit and sound device permit without fee for the Corn Ducky Derby to be held at Suggit Park on May third, two thousand twenty-five, from eight AM to two PM. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
Really? Why, why can't we wrap all these special ones? Cause your item number three too late.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Give me a lot.
Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number four, approve special, that permit for the Y W C A walk to walk on May tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council does hereby approve a special event permit for the walk to walk with the Y W C A event be held in, that's a mistake, not to be held at Suggit Park. It's going to be held at the Y M C A. They'll be in there, walk, run from there and proceed to the Grace Brown House on Homer Ave. They'll return to the Y W C A where they'll have an open house. May third.
Third.
May AM to two PM. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
Is that a four K or not?
It's, it is four. That I made a number of mistakes in the resolution, but four is correct.
Four K, May the third. And this is a big day.
All right, good one. Second.
Second.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella. Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Item number five, approve special vet and related permits for the Portland L G B T Q Centers Portland Community Pride Festival to be held at Courthouse Park on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council does hereby approve a special event permit and sound device permit without fee for the Portland L G B T Q Centers Portland Community Pride Festival to be held in Courthouse Park on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from ten AM to two PM. And be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements.
Second.
Any discussions? So I will say this before we vote. We should always vote with the outreach of our community because they are the ones who placed this in the situation. Or in the in our in our seats and we should not vote with our personal feelings. I ran on, it's not about the party, it's about the people. I ran on the majority that speak out, need to be represented. And I hope everybody votes that way on this particular item. It's been sort of a gut wrencher in my ward and it's not been fun. And I think it's sometimes unfortunate that communities don't come all the way together on certain things and that there isn't more forum for more open discussion about how people feel and to get more information about the events and the organizations that are trying to present their point of view and have events.
Any other discussion?
Councilmember Scott.
Name.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Name.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Item number six, approve special event related permits for the City of Portland Hispanic Festival to be held in Grand Avenue Plaza parking lot on May third, twenty twenty-five.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council does hereby approve a special event permit and a sound device permit without fee for the Portland, City of Portland Hispanic festivals be held in the Grand Ave parking lot on May third, two thousand twenty-three, from twelve noon to six PM and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall issue said permits conditioned on fulfillment of applicable state and local code requirements. And I will note that the event is being called Tino X Community Festival. That was updated after the resolutions for the agenda was put out.
So.
Second.
That's exciting. That's a first for Portland. And then another event on May third, May third is going to be busy.
Yeah, it's called Port Trust or they call it Port Trust or the other Port Trust. Bring the print thing, I'm sorry. Port Trust is over the other. See, I'm going from this May to July, August. It's not skip all those months.
Don't have snow.
So they're calling it the Latin X.
Tino X.
Latin X, yeah.
Latin X. Latin X.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number seven, designate City of Portland Fair Housing Officer.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council hereby designates the City of Portland Director of Finance and Administration as a fair housing officer and be it further resolved that any individual desires to file a fair housing complaint alleging discrimination should contact the City of Portland Finance Department.
I'll move it.
Second.
Questions? Discussion?
Councilmember Scott.
So I have the power? Body or one person?
It will just be me for the time being to take in information and it's it's a requirement, sorry. It's a requirement for the city because we do the housing grants and so forth.
Just wanted to mention.
No, it's just to give everybody a point of contact if they have a concern so that they have an actual human being to talk to.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number eight, authorize agreement with Phillips L L P for legal service related to tax enforcement proceedings.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement with Phillips Lidle L L P for representation, counsel and assistance in conducting tax enforcement proceedings and collection of two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three delinquencies for the sum of four hundred ninety-five dollars eighty cents for each parcel referred for this for for clover along with miscellaneous charges for legal filings, publication of public notices and mailings.
I'll move it. Discussion?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen, item number nine, resolution to establish City of Portland Economic Development and Loan Review Committee in the board members.
Resolve that the City of Portland County Council hereby establishes the City of Portland Economic Development and Loan Review Committee. And be it further resolved, the said committee shall include community members having experience in business, finance, real estate, banking, local government and other fields particular to the needs of the city. And be it further resolved that the county council hereby affirms Mayor Steve's appointments of the following committee members who shall serve terms expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty-seven. Elizabeth Greenwood, the Director of Finance Administration. John Reagan from the accounting field. Kellyanne O'Meara from banking, Mary Claire Pannella, the county council representative. Jenna Davy representing real estate, David McHale Development and Gary Van Gorder in economic development.
Hello. I'm second.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number ten, order removal of buildings improperly located at five dash seven Wheeler Ave.
Resolve that the county council does hereby affirm the code enforcement officer's declaration that the building upon property located at five seven Wheeler Ave do constitute to a danger to the health, safety and welfare of the public or unfit for occupancy. And declares that pursuant to section one hundred four dash seven of the administrative code, the owner is found to be in noncompliance with legal notices and orders regarding a dangerous building and hereby gives order the building building on said property be removed.
I'll move. Well, just for public knowledge, this building has been semi condemned and done before, brought back. It is what it is. When it was went to be inspected, Roy, I don't even believe we put anybody inside, did we this time? Because it was too. It was just a mess, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, do we use the drone at that location?
It's affirmative. The decision was made to fly one of the police department's drones through the building to clear it of any human occupancy at that time. Once it was clear, we put our padlocks on it and condemned the building unfit, let's say.
It's a real hazard in Ward one. We call it the cat house over there. These mass junk, things that have been left by squatters, animal infestations. It's it's absolutely horrible. I think this is one of the best things we can do for that piece of property because it is a quality piece of property, but just the, well. The building's not, it's a piece of junk at all and it's no good for anybody to be in. It's not safe. Last thing we want is a kid wandering in there and you know, something happening.
And it's been like that.
Yeah, we've done everything we can to try and save the building, but it's just at this point, it's it's un- it's unhealthy.
I agree, it's in bad shape, really bad shape and unsalvageable, but it's a shame because.
It is.
It is historic property in Portland. It was owned by Benson and Kerry Wheeler. And that Benson Wheeler is for whom Wheeler have his name. Also Grace Brown boarded there. Grace Brown of American tragedy. Bane and misfortune. That's it's just here's a picture of the house in better days. It's just really, really. Really, really tragic that it was left to decay the way it has because wow, it's just we're losing another piece of our past.
Yes, my concern is. Wouldn't absorb the cost to have it removed. That the current owners or the the city?
I think. So originally the cost would be borne by the city. The amount would be levied against their taxes. So either come back too much and taxes for the back building that's still on the property, which is fairly good shape. Or if the taxes weren't paid, it would come up to what you guys just approved tonight for all these hearings and then the sale of the property. Come back to the municipality to offset those costs as well. So I can't guarantee an instant refund.
Won't be an instant but we will get our money back sometime. We will lock the cell. But she is.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Gen item number eleven, authorize the fire department to hire. To over hire one firefighter position applicant. Anticipation the current firefighter retired tired.
Resolve with the city of Portland County Council grant authority to the fire chief. Hire one additional firefighter above their authorized staffing levels. Alleging the impact of staffing shortages based upon pending retirements. Be a further resolve that said authority is granted to the extent that such positions have been funded in the department's budget. And shall expire on July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll move. Any discussion?
No.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Everybody have anything else for you? Those more Jerry?